What works? E. C. City Council, let's go.
Sure, good.
Oh, no, it's not a veto on today. Much, much, I'm fine, fine.
That is the most fun. The fun is over.
Four years.
That has been the best three dollars they've ever had.
But I do need to talk to you about smoking. I have one thing to talk to you about.
And here?
No, not that. But it is funny. No, I, I, some possible things that I church got in the whole of them.
Yeah? Oh, wonderful. So what's the law?
Why don't you pray a little bit?
Sure. That sounds great.
Hey, folks, before we get started, check your cell phones. Make sure they're put on silent. And as soon as we get the on-air sign, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. Yeah.
Do that.
Tommy, do you up for praying for us tonight? Want to do it? Let's go ahead and rise if we could.
Shall we look to the Lord in prayer?
Sure.
Lord God of all, here we are, your creatures. We come before you tonight with supplication and prayer for our people who we represent. We thank you, Lord, for an opportunity now to come before you and ask for your wisdom and your grace as we do the people's business. Lord God, we thank you today for everyone who's in this room and in the sound of my voice, because we know that Xenia is still alive. It's the city of hospitality. It's moving forward, and we thank you for it. And everyone would say, amen.
Amen. Amen. Please face the American flag. I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. All right, we're going to call our meeting to order this evening on January 11, and our first item of business is our roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Serice?
Present.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
Here.
Great, thank you so much. Next item is the reorganization of council, which we will elect a council president and a vice president for 2024. And this time, I'll go ahead and turn the process over to our, our city clerk.
I'm shorty, so I'm going to step up here. So, as you all know, only four of the seven of you are eligible to serve as president or vice president. Nominations will be presented for president first, and if there are multiple nominations and seconds, we'll vote on them in the order that they are presented. Are there any nominations for president?
I nominate Will Urschel for the position of president for the 2024 term.
My second.
Was that Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving along to vice president, are there any nominations?
Madam Clerk, I move to nominate Wes Smith to be council vice president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our December 28, 2023 session. Do I have a motion?
Send it.
Moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Reynolds. Any questions or comments on that, on that before we vote? And I'll ask met our law director. So those who were not on council should abstain?
They can. They've got the minutes. They've read them. I don't know who was here that evening.
Okay. Great. Okay. Any, any questions here before we vote? Okay. Let's go ahead and call the votes.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Abstain.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. We have no special presentations for this evening. Next item on our agenda is audience comments. If you'd like to come and present any items to the council, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and your address, and feel free to address the, the council. Realize that this is your, your opportunity to petition. The council might be a discussion with us, and so don't be put off by that. But if there's some, some items you'd like to bring the council's attention, please feel free to come up at this time. Okay. Seeing as if there's none, did we get any via email?
No, sir.
Okay. Great. Next item is old business, and we do not have any old business from the last meeting. Next item will be new business. We have a resolution, Resolution 2024-001. That's an auspicious number here, starting our new year. And this is authorizing the purchase of a 2024 GMC Sierra 3500 HD truck through the Ohio Buys Cooperative Purchasing Program for the Public Service Department. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. And let me say right out, I appreciate council accommodating this at the last minute. This was a surprise to myself and the appointed officials, but we saw value in, in getting this to council immediately and beginning to evaluate options for purchases and projects that were approved in the 2024 budget, the capital portion in particular. Leadership of our wastewater treatment division became aware of the fact that in an extremely early deadline had been established for pickup truck orders for this model year. Included in our budget this year was $81,000 for the purchase of a new heavy-duty pickup truck for, from our sewer capital fund. This would be intended to replace an existing unit that, as your agenda report detailed, has significant hours in utilization and quite a bit of age and a lot of rust and wear. And it's a frontline vehicle that they use quite often for, for, for toting pretty, pretty heavy equipment. In order to move forward with the acquisition of a replacement by exercising an available option through the Ohio Buys Cooperative Purchasing Program, a purchase order would have to be submitted by January 25 of this year. Because there will be no additional city council meetings prior to that date, and it exceeds the authority that I have to authorize as an expenditure, it would be necessary for council to, to provide through, through an action this evening, authorization to move forward. So we are requesting that council authorize the purchase of the pickup as described in the amount of $62,000. This would be from Bob Ross Auto Group, again, as provided through the Ohio Buys Bidding Program. Officials from the Bob Ross Auto Group have indicated that the city should expect that the delivery would be somewhere in the, the neighborhood of 16 to 18 weeks. So even meeting this early deadline, there's still quite a bit of a, a lead time in order to, to acquire that vehicle. So it'll probably be summertime by the time we get it and have it outfitted for, for service. So again, we're asking that the council approve Resolution 2024-001 to authorize this. And I would just note that the existing unit, once that new unit is brought into place into service, we would work to surplus that existing unit. I don't think it'll have any value for us moving forward.
A motion for the resolution?
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution 24-001.
Great, thanks. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Serice. Any questions or comments on this before we call the vote?
I have a question. In terms of the undercarriage of the, of the truck, I know this, this may be a simple question, but I noticed there was rusting on the previous truck. Is there, is there an undercoating that's coming along with this new purchase, or was that included in the price?
I don't think so. It's something we can look into. It's not something we typically do with our fleet. Some degree of that is, given the age of the vehicles and their work pretty hard, you know, it can be expected. But definitely the, the rust was a big issue on the vehicle that we're replacing. But that's certainly we can, it's something we can look into, but it's not something that we apply as a standard.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is our appointed officials' reports. Mr. Assistant Finance Director?
I don't have anything to report.
Well, it was, the, the finance report that you guys submitted was very hopeful. So appreciate that, and as we've talked on our offside about where we stand with the, with the funds and those types of things, appreciate the work and you guys giving us an update on that, on that last Saturday as well, too. So, thanks. Any questions for the, for the finance department? Okay. Madam Law Director?
I have nothing, other than to welcome our three new council members. I'm looking forward to working with the three of you.
Questions for the law director?
Not tonight.
But just wait.
We got her on speed dial whenever you need her.
Thanks, Demet. All right, Mr. City Manager?
Of course, I have items. Monday is a holiday set aside to recognize the life and contributions of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and as such, city offices will be closed. We just asked the public to be aware of that. If they have business in our administrative facilities on Monday, we will be closed. This past Monday, I had an opportunity with representatives from Dillon LLC and Steve Brodsky. We did a presentation to the Xenia Community Schools and Board of Education, as we had talked about with council previously, regarding the Market District Project. And I thought we had a good presentation. They asked some good questions. Coming out of that, or at the end of that presentation, we made a formal request that the board consider identifying representatives from its body to serve on a work group that we might get into advanced discussions on public finance portions of that project. And the board did accept the volunteers of Bill Ritchie and Josh Day. And so they will then coordinate some staff members on their side to prepare for that discussion. This evening, I would suggest to council it would be appropriate if you're so inclined to look at identifying a couple of individuals from your body to serve as good faith representatives to that initiative. And I sent an email this afternoon, I, I, just kind of giving some context to this. I'm hopeful that this would be an introductory meeting with staff and then probably maybe two, a couple hour sessions in discussions with probably legal counsel and other stakeholders, Dillon and so forth, to really lay out what the nuts and bolts of that public finance piece might look like. So I would make the request this evening that council would consider either accepting some volunteers, or if you feel you need to make a, a motion to approve two representatives, I think it would be appropriate for us to, in, in like stead with what the Board of Education has done, to identify those individuals tonight. If, if we're able to do that, my staff would like to initiate immediately getting that process started. We are really at a, a, an important development point in the project that we need these details to come together. So I'd make that request. Just two other items this evening. We are, of course, one of the obligations that I have as city manager is to provide a state of the city. That's due by March 1, and I'm looking to probably provide that to council in conjunction with your first meeting, your first regular session in February. So we'll be talking more about that here. And then just a reminder, especially to our new council members, we will have a work session, a roundtable session, at the conclusion of our next regular session. We do it at the second meeting of the month, so just be prepared that it'll probably be a little longer than normal. We tried to spare you tonight without too much detail. We didn't want to scare you when you're first meeting, but there will be more agenda items as we, as we are projecting forward. So again, congratulations to the new members of council. Look forward to working with this entire group. We have challenges, we always do, but I think some of the challenges we face this year are issues because of good things happening in our community, and so those are great problems to have. So welcome and congratulations.
Any other questions for the city manager? Let's go ahead and move on that right now. So I'd like to nominate for that, I'm going to give three names so that we make sure we can have two showing up for the meetings, but I'd like to nominate Ethan Reynolds and Faith Serice and myself for that. Do I have a motion for that?
It's a move.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Dean. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the vice president. Any questions or comments?
Sorry, be.
To clarify, you are nominating three representatives from council to meet with members of the school board?
Yes, specifically for the Market.
District project.
Yeah.
Market District Project. Got it. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did you get all that okay?
Yes.
Good. All right. Let's call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Serice?
Abstain.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Good. Any other questions for the city manager? Okay. Next item is council comments and reports. And for those of you who are the council, this is your opportunity to share any thoughts with the rest of the council that you have. So I'm going to start Councilman Reynolds.
Starting those like them.
Because I was looking at you pointing that way.
I was like, keep going that way.
Start down here. Go ahead.
Well, no, I, I have nothing to add in this topics of committees, only because I'm not on any as of yet, so I haven't voted for those appointments yet.
Yep.
But I do thank everyone who, you know, supported and voted for me. I'm looking forward to serving the citizens of Xenia and, you know, working together with council. We have a great group here, and I'm excited to work with you all, so, and with the staff as well.
Great. Thanks. Councilwoman Serice?
I, like Ethan, we've not had the opportunity yet to delve into any of the committees, but I can definitely say already in the work session we had Saturday, I can see that this is a really dedicated group of folks. They work very well with each other. They respect each other. They like what's happening, and I wish the citizens would know how, how hard they're working behind the scenes for everyone, and I can't wait to be a part of this. Keep going. Such thank you.
Great. Thanks. Councilman Crawford?
First of all, I just appreciate the opportunity of being here and serving in the, in the community at this capacity. When I, when I, when I think about this entire group as in its entirety, the, the sense of experience and intelligence in what they do as a group is quite alarming. I, I have a sense that the, that the momentum that has begun is a momentum that's, that's worth tracking behind and, and being supportive of. I just feel an, an honor, as an honoring person, just to say, I want to support this group. I, the respect that I have for these, for this, for this group individually is, is really off the charts for me. I'm, I'm having to say, you know, this is something special, and it's a unique group. I'm just, I'm just honored to be a part of it, and I'll just leave it at that. And I want to thank you all for what you do and who you are.
Great. Thanks, James. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say I'm excited to work with the new council members and lots of different experiences and things that I think everyone brings to the table, so I think it'll be a great year.
Mr. Vice President?
All right. Thank you. First of all, thank you to the voters for their, your trust in, in putting us up, up here to make decisions. Sometimes they're not popular. If, if they weren't popular, we wouldn't be good leaders, because there's always something I've learned in, in the years that I've been up here, you're, you're going to vote on something that not everybody agrees on, but it's just how you present it and, and how you can collaborate and work with that. But what an honor to serve the city of Xenia, and it's very humbling as well. It's just, it's just a position that just don't take for granted, and really appreciate the opportunity to work with everyone up here. So congratulations to the newest members. If the public's not aware, we, we had a work session last Saturday. I'd like to publicly thank city staff. That meeting went from 8:30 to about 3:30. And we dealt with a lot of issues that are coming. Some of these issues are, are good problems, because we're growing as a city and, but of course, it takes infrastructure to keep your city moving, and that's where dollars are a little short. So we always do everything we can to spread that dollar as thin as we can and get the maximum value. That's why a lot of times we have to apply for grants, because we want our local funds to go as far as we can. So we, we apply the grants on the back end, and it just makes your dollars go a little farther. So thanks to city staff, we're always looking for those opportunities to help us save money. And a couple things, last year, I did chair planning and zoning, and I failed the last meeting to report on that. So I do have an update here. Planning and zoning meets the first or second Wednesday of every month, and the reason why it always falls on the Wednesday before the first council meeting, so it does kind of shift sometimes. We had a planning and zoning meeting last night, and in that meeting, that is, planning and zoning consists of five volunteer citizens that are not paid. They are volunteers that are serving the city in their best interest for the residents. And in that agenda item, their last meeting, we had an alternative equivalent review. This was to allow a proposed self-storage, three buildings that technically did not comply with our land development code, and it was voted on by planning and zoning to approve that due to some conditions, and those conditions were basically aesthetic landscaping and caps on the edge of the building to give it a little nicer appearance. So that was approved five to zero. Previous, we had a, two planning and zoning meetings in December. One was on the 13th, and then a follow-up meeting on the 21st. That was for 1087 to a Second Street for an expansion of 50 beds. That failed in the first meeting, three to one. A application was modified for a temporary expansion through March for that facility, and that failed again, three to two. So that was the Planning and Zoning Commission that made that decision. And so, other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Wes?
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. As has been said before, congratulations to our newest council member. We are excited to work with you, and congratulations, Vice President Smith, on your reelection as well. Looking forward to a great year this coming year. I have two different reports, but both actually were canceled. NVRPC meets on the first Thursday of the month, and they do not have a January meeting. And then our X Rec group, our recreation group, meets on the first Tuesday of the month, and that was canceled as well. We will be meeting soon, because we've got some things coming up this summer, fishing derby, we've got our spring fling, a few other things that are happening, so I'm sure that we will be meeting very soon. A couple of reports, just from my own calendar, on Tuesday, January 2, myself and President Urschel met with several other church leaders, and not to get into the weeds, but just collaborating on some opportunities that are presenting itself in Xenia to work with some youth services and, and more to come on that, but I was excited to be able to help facilitate that meeting. On Saturday, as we've mentioned, we had our all-day council retreat. I also want to thank our city staff for the time. I know it's a lot of extra time, it's a lot of extra work, so thank you for helping us with that day and allowing us the time to work together. I did want to mention, just on a side note, on the 9th, myself and Councilman Reynolds went to a community choir practice for the Martin Luther King service that's happening. And I wanted to mention it because we are participating in a choir. I believe at least six churches are represented in that choir. And the service, I'm sure you'll talk more about it, President Urschel, but it's happening on Monday, and it's a community service open to the public. It's a partnership between the African-American Ministerial Alliance and the Ministry Association of Xenia, and will be out at First United Christian Church on 42, 626 Columbus, I believe, North Columbus Street. And then Albert Ruffett, who's been praying several times for us here from Victory Christian Center, is going to be speaking, so very excited about that service. On Wednesday, the 10th, I had an opportunity to go out to Cedar Row University and be interviewed for a radio program that they do in conjunction with Strong Tower Media and talk about how, a little bit about my background at Cedar Row, but what's happening here in the city of Xenia, and be able to promote some of the things that are coming down the pike, things that we're looking forward to and that we're excited about. That same evening was mayors and managers in Miami'sburg. I don't think we have anything legislative to report on that.
No, nothing to report.
Okay. And then today, I attended the Dayton Business Journal Economic Forum that was held at Wright State University. Keynote speaker was Lieutenant Governor John Houston, followed by a panel discussion. That was a, several people on the panel talking about the region, economic outlook on 2024. So it was a great event, a lot of people there. I think that is all I have.
Great. Thank you.
May I ask what time that service is? Sure. It's at 2:00 P.M. That's a great question. 2:00 P.M.
It's 2:00 P.M. It's the end of the day.
Yeah, so the, the service is going to be at First United Christian Church on 626 Columbus Avenue, headed out on 42, north out of, out of town. And we moved that service a few years ago to the afternoon from the evening, principally because we found that a lot of the evenings, it was sleeting, and it was difficult to get there, and especially with, with older folks in the congregation going at night when the weather's bad is, is a, a real barrier. Last year, it was held at the First Evangelical Lutheran Church, and it was, it was packed out in the afternoon.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. So we're really looking forward, and I think it'll be, it'll be held from now on in the afternoon. We're, we're a little bit saddened, the, the students from Central State and Little Forest usually have a, a, a march from the campus downtown. We're going to invite them to come to the service, but because it's going to be about 15 degrees that day, they've, they've canceled that march, which I think is, is wise, because if the wind's blowing much, you can, you can get some, some real health issues going on there as well, too. But I would just encourage folks, you know, it's a holiday, and, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our national holidays, we tend to take a break and, you know, clean the garage or, you know, catch up on some paperwork, or do something like that. And I would just encourage you to, to take some time out that afternoon and come and just worship with the, with the broader body.
And, and bring your family.
And bring your family, too.
It's a very family-friendly service. My daughter's singing in the choir with me, so it's a very family-friendly service.
I'm going to be bringing my four grandkids with me.
Very nice.
And to enjoy that time. And it's, you know, it, it's an opportunity, Christ in his, his pastoral prayer in John 17, prayed that we could be one as he and the Father and Holy Spirit were one. And, and a lot of times, you don't get much, an opportunity to demonstrate that, but I'll tell you, Tom, you will be so encouraged by being with, with folks from multiple other congregations all across the city and the choir and Albert speaking. It's just going to be a great, a great event, so I encourage you to do that. Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff as well, too, for our, our retreat.
I'm going to be bringing my four grandkids with me. And to enjoy that time. And it's, you know, it's an opportunity. Christ in his pastoral prayer in John 17, prayed that we could be one as he and the Father and Holy Spirit were one. And a lot of times, you don't get much opportunity to demonstrate that. But I'll tell you, Tom, you will be so encouraged by being with folks from multiple other congregations all across the city, and the choir, and Albert speaking. It's just going to be a great event. So I encourage you to do that. Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff as well, too, for our retreat. It was a great opportunity for us to get, step out and get started early on. We've got a ton of things to be working on this year. And Ryan, I think, as you said in the past, it's tiring, but it's all good stuff this year as well, too. So just really exciting. Thank Jeremy Cox for coming and being with us tonight from the school board. I said, Jeremy, haven't you had enough this week already?
Fun for punishment.
That's right. So anyways, want to thank the school board for letting us come and share about the marketplace downtown, and looking forward to collaborating with the folks there on the board on that as we move forward. It's just going to be an exciting time with that as well, too. So thanks, Jeremy, for coming tonight.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Sure. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask that we have a motion to go into executive session. And for those of you in the audience, executive session, we have something called the Sunshine Law, that all of our discussions as council are public items and should be done in the context of the public. But we have, there are six specific things, though, that we are allowed by the Ohio Buys Code to go into session, which is a private session discussion. And so tonight, we have two items, two of those items. We have a purchase and sale of property, and also discuss confidential business information related to economic development. So I'd like to have us go ahead and go into that executive session. Do I have a motion for that?
I move that we go into the executive session.
Great. Thank you for, Councilman Reynolds, and seconded by James. Thank you so much. Okay. Any discussion on that before we vote?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to add that I don't think the council anticipates any business activities after that.
That's correct. Yeah. So as soon as we adjourn out of that, we'll go ahead and adjourn out of our council session as well, too. So you're welcome to stick around, but we're going to go into the chambers over here, and we'll probably go ahead and come back out here and adjourn immediately. But we'll be done at that time as well, too.
Can we take five minutes to...
Yes. So let's go ahead and vote on going into that, and then we'll recess for five